Next item tonight is receipt of petitions or correspondence from the public. Ms. Presley, do you have anyone to speak this evening?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
First speaker is Gary Kushner.
Good evening, I'm Gary Kushner at 1106 Fetchit Road in Brown Town. After listening to the public presentations at the February 10th council meeting and the interim manager and council comments that followed, I felt there was a communication disconnect between the citizens and the government. I thought I could maybe help promote communications by developing a presentation that addressed relevant issues in a more organized and cohesive way. I emailed council and requested permission to deliver that presentation at the February 19th work session, which had a light agenda and no other public comments scheduled. However, the mayor advised me before that session that four of six on the council denied my request when unanimous consent was required. Council on many occasions has openly encouraged citizen feedback, but this decision was inconsistent with that policy. Being limited to three minutes in the public presentation's part of the agenda rarely provides a practical opportunity to effectively communicate ideas and opinions. And what source states that three minutes is the appropriate time limit anyways? What's more important, keeping the council meeting shorter or being able to effectively receive citizen input? I've had to shorten my comments by 25% tonight to stay within the allotted timeframe. If council is sincere in its belief that citizen participation is the desirable element in decision-making, the public presentation time limit should be expanded. My February 19th planned presentation required approximately 15 minutes and offered over 20 suggestions for improvement in areas including the 21 budget. So it was better suited for the work session than a regular council meeting. Since council denied my offer to address them Wednesday night, I created a video titled "Town Talk: A Conversation with Gary Kushner" that is available on the Royal Examiner website, and I encourage everyone to view it. That video also provides comments on some of the discussion that occurred at the work session in addition to my prepared presentation. And the presentation in text form is also provided and follows the video on that site. The interim manager is already advertising for staff positions reflecting an implementation of his planning and tourism reorganization and has begun discussions with potential outsourced businesses, which all but precludes council's serious consideration of opinions that keeping the prior structure would produce better results. Those actions give the appearance that council doesn't sincerely value citizen input. Continuing such a practice will only encourage greater apathy by the public when they consider that any effort on their part is mostly useless because decisions have already been made. That concludes my comments tonight, and I hope they will receive some serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Ken Damron.
Kenneth Damron, 715 Stockton Road in Front Royal. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, interim manager, and legal council. My main point is going to be about the redundant water line. You guys seem to think that 522 North is your domain, and it's not. This is the town of Front Royal, not the county of Warren, or 522, or Dominion Energy, or any of those people. Now, Mr. Teedrick's budget, he's including $11 million over a long period of time, about $500 million a year. Now, not quarreling with the numbers if they're wrong, because Dominion agreed to pay $3.5 million back in 2011, so that will reduce whatever we have to pay by the town. But we don't need to pay that at all. Just say no. I can't believe the arrogance of a council committing to people of Front Royal $30 to $15 million over a 30-year period. That's a lot of money, and we don't need it. Now, if Mr. Stanley in the county want to build it, let them build it. Let Dominion build it. But we don't have to do it. That's all I got on that. I hope you'll consider that when you... It hasn't been proposed yet officially, I guess, but I hope you'll consider that. Now, another subject. We're having all this trouble with the EDA, they're having their money problems, and you don't want to pay them for the police department, and this, that, and the other. You owe them the 8.34 million, there's no quarrel about that. Why don't you just pay them in cash? You had the money. You closed last year with $28 million in cash. Just pay them the 8 million bucks, eliminate the debt service for the next 30 years. Save all that money. Another subject. We're talking about advertising the real estate rate at 13.5 or 13. What the hell difference does it make? Property taxes only amounts to 18% of your revenue, and you're talking about half a cent? It's petty cash. Who cares? Enact either one, doesn't matter. The rate's going to be whatever you enact. I think that's about it, all the complaints I got this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Damron. Next speaker, please.
Janice Harg.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janice Harg. I live at 1120 Ashby Street. "I don't want my taxes lowered," said no one ever. "I'm asking the council to seriously reconsider their proposed half a cent per $100 assessed value tax reduction on real estate. I did the math for one home, and it was a difference of $16.78 for one year. Hardly a deal breaker for most homeowners. In the past few council meetings, we have learned that infrastructure updates are seriously needed as they are woefully overdue. Budgeting for those updates has previously been unsuccessful, and with the increased need for repair and replacement and only a slight population growth, the coffers have seen little, if any, growth. How will we pay for those much-needed improvements? We have an $8 million note on a brand-new police department that on which so far no real solution on paying for has been revealed. The EDA has offered a decent loan percentage on the balance, and while the council gambled and lost on a lesser percentage amount, we now must take the bull by the horns and face this issue. Cooperation with the EDA, who is trying to help, is a must, and it doesn't appear that they're getting any cooperation. I appreciate that the council is trying to be good stewards of our tax dollars. In working out a deal on this new facility, it was desperately needed. A lower percentage loan rate is always a good thing, but it's not a reality, and we need to make a deal with the EDA. How does council propose to pay for this police department? By reducing taxes. Lowering the tax rate even for one year isn't going to make this go away. Council has approved the outsourcing of services that a budget needs to be worked out for. It's been said that the town is saving $576,000 by jobs that were cut, but we still must pay for outsourcing. We are spending $24,500 looking for a permanent town manager. How is lower taxes going to pay for all of this? The town is suing the EDA for the loss of $13 million, yet the EDA doesn't have that money to pay back. The only people who win in a lawsuit are the lawyers, present company excepted. We have an intelligent and talented council that needs to come to a positive solution. Please don't waste any more of our taxpayer monies. And finally, should the tax rate be reduced this year, would citizens be subject to a big increase to be brought before the community next year? How can accomplishments be made by tax reduction? Not this year, but certainly an increase is in the future for town residents. What scares me is how much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Linda Allen.
Linda Allen, 15 Massey Street. Good evening, Mayor Tewalt, members of town council and staff. My report focuses on a talk given to town council on February 19th, 2020 work session. It contains errors of fact, thereby misleading the council and the public about the performance of the visitor center and the former director of tourism and community development. Records were available to use, and the person reporting had been taught about the reports which were sent to the correct office. Records may or not have been used. To walk you through your package, the contents recite the error and then the correction. There are questions relevant to the budget and to the visitor center. There is a financial record of gross sales for the visitor center. I attached a copy of the visitor center records for number of visitors in their home state and country to correct other misrepresentations. There's also a correction about the CDBG grant and its origin and process of formation, and I state my credentials in the process. In addition, my understanding is that the planning office has had a former employee brought back at $95 an hour. My prior comments that the planning director wasn't on overload for demands would be verified is there is a backtracking about the decimation of that office by having to hire someone in the present. I put a sample in of his work, but I'm going to skip that. I'm just very proud of him, and I'm very proud of the community development person. Their work was always excellent quality. I am not reading the report of errors in deference to Mayor Tewalt's request for decorum, and to an extent, it is a personnel matter. But the effects of the actions and the misrepresentations have to become public. For the visitor center, the ad campaigns every two weeks for Facebook ads reach 5,000 people each time. They aren't going out. Two ad blitz campaigns, each of which would reach 3 million people, are not going out. The effect is that we have no way to create tourism income or economic development income. We are cut off from these efforts on unknown date outsourcing tourism. We have been down the road before, and the startup time added to the familiarization time is lengthy. But the adversarial approach to DEA would be ongoing with the lawsuit and a continuing delay. Yet the budget promises a half a cent tax decrease. If you think about it, that tax decrease is useful to one party in an upcoming election to say, "We gave you a tax break, but we can pursue the truth of the details at the proper time." The second concept, rightsizing government, can double back on the council in the sense without consistent, ongoing tourism income and economic development to offset tax increases, the one-person opinion exercised to create the budget of right size means that council can be forced to raise taxes in the next year. In fact, actions to date through a budget destructive to the town is not called management of limited resources. It is called mismanagement. Please do investigate the misrepresentations contained in this report.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Paul Gabbard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley View Drive. I would like to make a couple of comments on some comments that were made by the interim town manager and the council at the last meeting. In response to the interim town manager, that he made a public statement that my wife and I moved here from Herndon. I don't know why he would do that. Does that mean that we shouldn't have a voice in the governing of Front Royal? Does that mean that anyone who has moved here from any jurisdiction or someone who will be moving here to one of the many housing developments that the interim town manager wants so badly, does that mean that they won't have a voice in it because they will be out of towners? Mr. Gillespie, you said that you lost sleep over the corridor. Don't lose sleep over it. There's nothing you can do about it right now. You don't lose sleep over something you can't control. It'll make you old and gray like me. In the September 2019 engineering report, it stated that this line was requested by Dominion. Why are the town taxpayers paying this if it was requested by Dominion? We shouldn't be paying a thing for it. I suggest that all that is needed is a bypass line run under the river to the corridor. You put a redundant line in the corridor, it doesn't mean anything if the line in town breaks. If a line in town breaks, nobody has water, the town or the corridor. So why put a redundant line all the way down to Walmart and Dominion Power Plant? We don't have one in town, so why should they have one in the corridor? Stop playing games with the EDA, and that's all you're doing, and you all know you are. You need to do the financing on the police station. It's only going to cost the town more money in the end, and if you all can't see that, I don't know what to tell you. I really don't. If you all are any kind of business people, you should know this. You should be able to see this and stop listening to the town manager. Not only that, because the town citizens are not paying for this loan, that means that the county taxpayers are paying for this loan for the Front Royal Police Department. You're putting this burden on the county taxpayers. Advertising the 13% tax rate was a business 101 blunder. Since you already had the tax rate of 13%, since you already advertised it, you cannot now go back to 13.5. You're stuck with the 13 because you've advertised it. You never undercut yourself before you even know what the budget is. Now you're looking at 13% before you even know what the budget's going to be. I don't get it. I don't get it. You want suggestions from everybody, but you don't listen to them. You don't listen. You stare at all of us when we come up here, but you do not listen. We are trying to help you all, but all you all want to do is listen to the town manager. And if you will notice, that this town has not been the same since the town manager became mayor. This town has gone bonkers. The people are upset. The people are extremely upset, but you all do nothing, nothing about it, except for listen to the interim town manager. You don't listen to anybody else. Tax savings on a $350 house from 13% to 13.5% is $17.50. Why lower it to $13? Why not take that, whatever it is, 6 million that it's going to bring in, take that and use it somewhere else? $13.50 on a $350,000 house. It's just totally unbelievable, and I hope you all are listening to this with open ears, because this is what everybody back here sees. I think I don't want to go really any further. If I do, it sounds like I'm just a complainer. Right? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Last speaker of the night is Bruce Rappaport.
Bruce Rappaport, 300 West Main Street, Front Royal. Gosh, I don't know if I can put it any better than the speakers before me. Only thing I can say, I remember a movie called, I think it was Cool Hand Luke, said, "What we have here, failure, communicate." Now, I had a friend that was city manager down in Fredericksburg, Virginia. He retired. And he had an MBA, had about 15, 20 years urban planning. He got his MBA from William &amp; Mary and became city manager there for seven years. Point is, is council has put Mr. Teedrick in a tough spot. I have nothing against Mr. Teedrick. I'm sure he's a great wealth manager. Okay? There was a guy, his name was Jack Bogle, from Vanguard. He always said, "Stay the course." If we had stayed the course, we wouldn't be going through all this drama that we have right now. The fact is, you guys need to go out and find a city manager that has the background to come in here and straighten this mess out. Again, you know, a half a cent increase, I mean decrease, I guess gets me two glasses of wine at the Pub House or The Element annually. The thing is, is you acted irrationally, in my opinion. You could have waited. There wasn't any urgency. Back in November, people were telling you, "Don't do it. Don't make a bunch of changes. You know, let the new guy come in and set up his own organization." That's where you made your mistake. Again, I have respect for Mr. Teedrick, but he was in a tough spot, and you gave him, you just gave him the blank check, "Go over, work a budget out," and I'm sure he did the best he could. But the fact is, Stralsburg, they have a rate at 16 cents per 100. 8,000 people live there, and there must be 15,000 people in Front Royal, and we're at 13? That's why you can't get anything fixed here. I don't like taxes, but if you raised a 3-cent tax, you're talking about $50 annually on about a $200,000 home. I can handle that. I can handle going to Burger King 10 times a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more speakers? Oh, okay, Mr. Gabbard, we'll give you a couple minutes yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley View Drive. Two things. If this council really does care about this town and its citizens, please set up a six-to-eight member panel to help you with the budget. To go over the budget, give you suggestions that you will listen to. The second thing is, and listen to this real carefully, please, for the town and the citizens of this town, put together another panel to pick the next town manager. Do not leave that up to the interim town manager. That is something that should be left up to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our public presentation this evening. The next item tonight is report of special committees, town officials, and the interim town manager. Mr. Teedrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, we have Mr. Stanley here, and I thought we'd let him go ahead and give his report. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. In my report, first, Development Review Committee met last on January 22nd. The committee discussed projects in the county, including the site plan for 6475 Winchester Road for a 324,000-square-foot warehouse. That's the Equus Warehouse, and I know they're working with your public work staff. They've got to relocate a sewer line for that project, but they're working on the site plan. I think we're hopeful that we'll have a site plan in hand this spring. Talked about the staffs, the multi-tenant building at Riverdale Commons, and I'll touch on that in a moment. Proposed expansion to the Autocare Clinic, Route 34522. They're adding a five-bay building. Six pending short-term tourist rental applications and two private-use camping applications. Committee also discussed town projects, including update on the Sheets project, and I'm happy to report, as of the 12th of February, the stormwater plan for that project was approved by DEQ, and I'm imagining they're on their process and their way to get their necessary permits. The daycare was approved at Front Royal Business Park. There was discussion on housing, local motels, and the transition from short-term to long-term occupancy. The Rite Aid, which has submitted building permits to be converted to a CVS there on the corner of John Marshall Highway and Commerce Avenue. And a general discussion on affordable housing. The committee will meet again this Wednesday, February 26, 10:00 a.m., in the caucus room, and certainly any of you all are invited to attend as well. New housing starts and review of the new construction for 2019. I want to report that we had a total of 150 new home starts in Warren County. Of that number, 24 were located inside town limits. I think that was a high number for the last few years. The remaining 126 outside town limits. As a comparison, in 2018, we had a total of 157 new home starts. The 150 represents the second year in a row where we've seen a downturn in new construction. Population estimates, the recently released Walden Cooper Center population estimates for July 1 of 2019 has Warren County's population growing to 39,936. That's an increase of 2,361 people, or about 6.3% since the 2010 census. Obviously, we'll be going into the 2020 census this year, and hopefully, that will show our community's growth to over 40,000. Delinquent tax sale, TACS, one of the two firms that handles delinquent tax collection for us, held an auction of delinquent real estate here at the Government Center on February 20th. They sold a total of 23 properties for $131,100. Of the 23, four covered the total taxes and interest and costs associated with the sale. The Pond Law Group is looking to hold a sale later this spring. They're the other firm, and they'll be going to court in March to have the circuit court order the sale. Broadband, the governor's office is working to bring high-speed internet service to every Virginian by 2028, and they've been working to increase grant funding for localities to work with internet service providers to expand to low-density areas. The draft budget has $70 million in the next biennium, so $35 million per year, and we're continuing to talk with both the governor's office, Comcast, and CenturyLink, and others about the unserved areas of Warren County. According to broadband now, 91.7% of Warren County residents have access to wire broadband, but that still leaves over 3,100 without such service. Tourism Committee met on February 12th. The Community Wayfinding Initiative continues to move forward and is currently under review by VDOT. We're hopeful that we'll be ready to move forward here in the next month. There's a lot of discussion about the committee about tourism being a joint effort between the town and county, and they also discussed the proposed budget of the county's projected tourism funding for FY 2021. They'll meet again on February 26 to continue their discussions. The county's Love Works sign proposed for Route 34522 at the Guard Hill Road intersection has been designed and sent to VDOT for comment, as well as the town staff. As soon as we receive final approval from the town and VDOT, we'll look forward to move forward with construction. Borough Brooks Music Park, reconfiguration of the playground and installation of music park equipment should be completed within the next two weeks. We hope to be able to set a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I'll make sure an invitation gets sent out. That's, of course, the park there, located along Cryzer Road, and thanks to a generous donation from Lorraine Holquist, we're being able to add some new equipment and freshen up that park. A fire and rescue training facility, bids for the project were due on January 16th. We received three bids, and they're currently being reviewed prior to making a recommendation to the board for consideration. That facility location is up off of the environmental study area site off of 55 East. The last thing I want to point out was the multi-tenant building, former Capital One building there at Riverdale Commons. The building permit has been approved, and construction demolition has been authorized. That building's been, I think, brought down by today, so we're looking forward to that project getting up and running, and supposedly by summer, we'll have a new Five Guys and Chipotle restaurant for the community. So that's all I have, unless there are any questions for me. So that's all I have, unless there are any questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Stan.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, next, we have a report by Commonwealth Attorney John Bell.
Good evening. I've been asked to speak tonight about issues of online speech and harassment. Some folks in law enforcement and some folks in the political community have approached me at my office with questions about where the line is. As a lawyer and a politician, trust me, I have been exposed to abusive speech, both in person and online. But I will say that my office takes a very robust view of the First Amendment, that a lot of what has been complained about comes under the heading of protected speech. But there are limits. We tend to look at the online world as the Wild West or free-for-all, for which there are no rules. And the Code of Virginia actually does place some limits. You cannot make credible threats against someone's life or property online, the same way you cannot over a telephone or face-to-face. And there are laws that cover that. We are prepared to enforce those. But talking smack online doesn't necessarily amount to a felony crime. The particular code section is eighteen-two dash sixty, which states that "Any person who knowingly communicates in a writing, including an electronically transmitted communication producing a visual or electronic message, a threat to kill or do bodily injury to a person regarding that person or any member of his family, and the threat places such person in reasonable apprehension of death or bodily injury to himself or to his family member, is guilty of a Class VI felony." That's basically where the line goes. And I would encourage everybody, well, first of all, to toughen up your skin, because there's a lot out there that is not a crime. But second, for those who are tempted to lose their temper online, there is a limit. I've appreciated the folks who've spoken tonight. That's a classic example of free Americans standing up and speaking their mind to their elected officials in a firm and frank but respectful manner. And if we could bring that to our online presences as well as to our face-to-face meetings, I don't think we'll have any problems. And as always, my office stands ready to answer any individual questions that anybody on the board or any other of the council or any other persons have to bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next on the, for the reports, I would like to introduce Chief McGalas. He'd like to introduce. We'd also like to welcome Communication Officers Brittany Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I always like to be able to show our new folks to council and introduce them. As you all have known, we had a vacancy in our communications section, and I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Brittany Dennis as our newest communication officer. She comes to us, she's got about five years of experience with the Warren County Sheriff's Office, so she comes to us already seasoned. She graduated from the Skyline Criminal, actually, it was Rappahannock back then, yes, still the Rappahannock Regional Criminal Justice Academy. Their communications basic back in 2016. So she comes to us with a wealth of experience already and has been able to hit the ground running, and we're just tickled to death to have her as part of the family now. So, Ms. Dennis, is this your counsel? Brittany Dennis, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Welcome, Brittany.
Chief, you can stay here. I understand we have a really proud moment to pin on Sergeant Stripes to Brian Whited.
We do. You too.
So we had a sergeant retired earlier this year.
We've had that vacancy open for the past couple of months. And during that time, we've been, our office has put together a fairly rigorous selection program, and we had a really good response from our agency. We had, I think, eleven members that qualified for the position, which says something to the longevity of our folks. It's an excellent thing to be able to see that many qualified people be able to actually compete for this position, this rank. MPO, former MPO Whited, has come out on top of that selection process. Brian came to work for the Front Royal Police Department back in May of 2002. But you were an employee of the town of Front Royal years prior to that. When did you first come to the town?
Ninety-five.
Nineteen ninety-five. So he's been with us for a long time. Became a police officer in May of 2002. Has worked various different positions within the police department. He was a narcotics agent in the Northwest Regional Virginia Drug Task Force, as well as the Gang Task Force. And Brian has fulfilled a lot of ancillary duties within the police department, stepped above and beyond the normal course of his duties. He's a member of our emergency services team. He's a field training officer that helps train and bring along our new recruits. He's a seasoned firearms instructor for our agency, somebody we look to to handle a lot of that training when we put it on in-house. So he wears a lot of hats, and we're very proud that he's been able to come through this promotional process out on top. And he brings with him tonight his lovely wife, Erin, and she's going to do the honors of pinning his sergeant's badge on him, drawing as little blood as possible. Right there. There's a...
Usually, the guys pin the girls.
We're not going to talk about that either. Trying to protect his manhood. Just a little blood.
I might add that he's also a father of two, right?
That's right. And he's a good dad, too.
Congratulations, Brian.
Chief, when you're going to really pin them on?
That's old-school. Work on the general barbie.
That's great. Thank you, Chief, and congratulations, Officer Whited. Next, Mr. Mayor is a, you know, one of the greatest things I get to do is recognize special employees. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing an individual who, it just so happened, within five to seven days, I received two citizen emails regarding this employee. And I wanted to read both of them, if you indulge me. It's not very long. First one is, "I would like to, I would just like you to know that Jason Neal made my grandson's day-to-day. It was trash day in my neighborhood, and I'm sure it was very busy for your staff due to the holiday, but he still took the time to show a little boy the big truck. My two-year-old grandson just loves big trucks right now. He waited to see the big truck at the end of the driveway when he saw it come around the corner. I walked to the end of the driveway with him. Jason got out of the truck, gave him cookies, let him look inside, and showed him how to dump the front bin over. He then blew the air horn for him. My grandson then carried the cookies with him everywhere and stood at the other end of the driveway to watch them exit Eric Street. Thank you, Jason, and happy holidays to you all." You know, that in of itself was something I believe goes above and beyond the normal call-duty, normal daily activities. Ms. Presley and I, we really relish getting those kind of emails, and we were preparing to recognize him at this meeting. But a few days later, I received this note. "On the thirty-one December, I noticed the trash truck coming, and my neighbor was not home. Since she has two handicapped people she cares for, I went to place her trash at the curb. After placing her trash can on the curb, I tripped and lacerated my forehead. Mr. Neal saw this and jumped out of the truck. He was driving to check on my status. He saw I was lacerated and had severe bleeding. He assisted me across the street to my house, got my wife to give him some washcloths to catch the bleeding and to evaluate my injuries. I was bleeding profusely, and he stayed with me until I could determine the extent of my injuries. Later that day, he returned to check on me and my wife. My injuries required six stitches and had a lot of abrasions on my face. Mr. Neal could have easily drove off, but just chose to render assistance instead. Mr. Neal should be recognized for going above and beyond his duties. Thank you, Mr. Neal, and you have my sincere appreciation for your assistance." Ladies and gentlemen, that's the kind of employees we have in this community. And that's also the kind of citizens we have that take the time to recognize employees that go above and beyond their service. Over the last several months, that's what we've been focusing on within our, with our organization, is rising above excellence in everything. And Jason, I just want to really commend you for your activities, and I'd like for you to come up front with your family, if you would, please.
Mr. Mayor, I buried the lead, and I hate to, I'd like to end on that note, but I have two other quick announcements. We have water line upgrade, road closure. Bushon Contracting is installing new water lines and service upgrades on Parkview Drive. This work is, will be completed approximately March thirteenth. General work hours are seven to seven, Monday through Friday, weather permitting. If inclement weather occurs, work will resume the following day. So if you're driving in that area, we'd ask you to please be extra vigilant. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have town scholarships. The Front Royal Town Council is pleased to announce that the town is receiving applications from graduating high school seniors living in the town limits for three scholarships. Mr. Mayor has been customary over the years. The town sponsors two scholarships, and we had a generous anonymous donor contribute another five hundred dollars. So this year, we have three scholarships. And these scholarships are awarded to pursue continued undergraduate or trade education at an accredited university, college, community college, or trade school. All high school seniors who currently attend public, private, as well as homeschooled students are encouraged to apply. Applications are available on the town website or by contacting the town manager's office at six-three-five-eight-zero-zero-seven. Interested graduating seniors must complete and return the application by 5:00 p.m. on March twentieth, 2020. Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's all I have for my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Teedrick. Next item tonight is requesting inquiries of town council members. Anyone who wants to speak?
I'll start. The first thing I wanted to do is a couple of things that I heard tonight. I just wanted to just point out, one of the things that was said earlier tonight is that the half-cent tax rate would gather sixty-seven million dollars, and that would not be accurate. I'm sure we all wish that that would be, but I think it was sixty-seven thousand, right, that half cent? Just wanted to make sure before that, that information, I didn't want any citizens to think that's what we were doing. Another thing that was mentioned tonight was somebody likened the tax increase for a family that it might mean, you know, two less glasses of wine at Element or having to eat ten meals at Burger King. And I just want to say that for some citizens, they're not having one glass of wine at Element because they can't afford it or don't eat out at Burger King. So I think we have to take into consideration every citizen and what their finances are. Next, I wanted to share something positive, I thought. This weekend, I had the opportunity to spend some time on Main Street on Saturday afternoon. First, we enjoyed lunch at The Mill, one of my favorite places for lots of reasons. But then we traveled up one side of the street and down the other. We reminisced about Compton's and the Boston Store and just different, looking at the new businesses and what used to be there and just, you know, talking about childhood. And then, by chance, though, I ended up in the Old Timers Antique Store, just in time for Barbara Dumire's birthday cake. So she had a cake that probably lasted from myself to Mr. Holloway. She had a long cake. She was celebrating her birthday with everybody that was coming in, and that was really nice. I got a chance to speak with her and talk with her and shared my card, and she said she was going to contact me. I also spoke with some Girl Scouts that were selling cookies in the middle of Maine. One of them was a former student. Also bought some cute little wishlets from the White Picket Fence, and I enjoyed meeting and talking with Chris Lawrence there. And it was just a beautiful afternoon to enjoy a little shopping, and I really enjoyed it, being on Main Street. So just wanted to say, I'm glad we have that opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to address some of the comments that were made tonight. I want to start by saying, as far as the search for the new town manager, we have hired an executive search firm for this search. And rest assured that interim town manager, Mr. Teedrick, did not participate in any of those meetings. It's true. The second thing is, is the interim town manager will have no process in picking the new town manager. That will be a decision that's made by the council. We're going to have citizen input, and that's how it's going to work. They will recommend, I think, up to six, possibly, of qualified candidates, and we will interview them. And I'm sure that the interim town manager will not be a part of those interviews, because he has not participated in any of the interviews as far as the search for him. So with that being said, the second thing is the redundant water line. I just want to say one thing. If there's a water break in our town, our system, and Robbie is one to know about this more than probably me, but we can isolate a certain part of that pipe without losing water. Every place but one, and that's out in that corridor. If there's a break out in that corridor, there's a chance that we could lose all water to the industrial businesses and residential places that are out in that corridor. There's only a million and a half gallons in that storage tank, and that's it. Now, with the consumer, as far as dominion, just ask the question, how far is that going to last without the town being sued because of lack of failure to supply water? So that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yes. So I wanted to talk about a few points brought up. Gary Kushner, I was one of the ones who was okay with you doing the work session, and I'm going to look at your video this evening. I'm looking forward to that. Let's see here, Ms. Linda Allen. I want to make sure you have my business card, because I'm not getting the same information about tourism that you're getting, so I think your source might be better. And Paul, just like Gary said, he had, Matt wasn't involved in any of the process. We reviewed all of the RFPs and picked our firms, did the interviews, did all of that stuff. We are going to choose the candidate. We are going to choose the candidate as a council, along with community input. We, we talked to this particular firm. Their idea is to have the candidate, and it'll kind of depend on him or her, if they will come and do maybe a Q and A with the community, or if it'll be like, maybe like a mixer kind of situation, where they're kind of floating around their room, talking to people and answering questions. So we, we picked based on their ability to, to include community input. And I think that's it for me. You got something?
Anyone else? Okay, we'll continue on with our meeting. Here's this evening, the report of the mayor. The only thing I'd like to say tonight is I'm glad everybody turned out this evening, and you're welcome at any time to come in and express your views on any issue that may come up on the agenda and/or otherwise. So thank you for coming out tonight, and we're glad to have you at any time. Thank you a lot. Next item tonight is proposals for additions or deletions of items to the agenda. Okay, we don't have any of those. Next item is number eight, consent agenda. We have nothing on our consent agenda tonight. At this time, we're going to go into two public hearings. The first public hearing is ordinance to amend to Chapter 175-106, Point B, Point 1, Point B, six pertaining to signs, regulations for the medical facilities for the medical center, Valley Health. Before we get into the public hearing, Ms. Presley, would you read the summary, please?
Valley Health submitted, submitted an application for an ordinance amendment to the town's sign regulations. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the attached proposed amendment. Council is requested to affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment request submitted by Floyd Heater on behalf of Valley Health and Warren Memorial Hospital pertaining to sign regulations for medical facilities within a medical center, such as a hospital. If approved, the amendment would change town code 175-106B1B6 by defining what a medical center is and modify existing standards pertaining to just them.
This time, we'll open the public hearing to the public. Anybody would, is anyone signed up to speak, Ms. Presley?
No, sir.
No, sir?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here would like to speak this evening in regards to this signed change?
Good evening. I'm Ron Tenille with Identity America. I'm the vice president. I'm here this evening with Tom French, who's our president and CEO, and also Mark Baker with Valley Health. And basically, we just want to thank you for your cooperation and assisting us with this program. Tom and I are the designers for the Valley Health Sign Program. This is their standard corporate signage program, and I think it will be of great benefit to the hospital, the new campus, and also to Front Royal. So we, we just want to thank you again for everything that you've, you've done to work with us on this. And if you have any questions or anything that you'd like to ask us, Tom is our technical advisor, and Mr. Baker is here for any questions also.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? If not, the public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council affirm on its first reading an ordinance to amend to town code Chapter 175-106B1B6 by defining what a medical center and modify existing standards pertaining to just medical centers as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Ms. Presley, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Mezzes absent. Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Second public hearing tonight is a, is an ordinance amendment of Chapter 9-303 to provide for the abatement of blighted property. Ms. Presley, would you read the caption, please?
Using the successful model found in Loudoun County Code and used in Loudoun County and the town of Leesburg, a spot blight abatement ordinance for the town is proposed. The ordinance provides for the abatement of blighted properties which threatens the public's health, safety, and/or welfare. Council is requested to affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment to town code Chapter 9-303, spot blight abatement as presented.
Do we have a speaker, Sata?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak this evening? Is there any, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? No one coming forth, and public hearing's closed. I'll turn it over to the council.
I move that council affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment to town code Chapter 9, 303, spot blight abatement as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Presley, could we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Mezzes absent. Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next item tonight is item number 11, council appointments, town scholarship committee. Do I hear a motion, please?
Yes. I move that council appoint Councilwoman Gillespie and Councilwoman Thompson to the town scholarship committee for 2020.
Have a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Next item tonight is a closed meeting that we'll be talking about the Afton Inn here this evening during our motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that town council convene and go into a closed meeting with respect to the former Afton Inn property for the following purposes. Discussion or consideration of the investment of the public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of town council would be adversely affected pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A6 of the town, of the Code of Virginia. Two, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia. And three, consultation with legal counsel employment employed or retained by a town council regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. We will be coming back after our closed meeting to close our regular meeting this evening. If you'd like to stay, you can, or you may not, whatever, whatever you need to do. Thank you.